For the notice went out for this date, February 15, 2022, or amendment to zoning ordinance 193.6. Manager Trent, would you care to make a presentation regarding the amendment?
I'll do my best, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity.
Sure.
In your packet, you should have the background information regarding the proposed ordinance that's been drafted that includes some minor changes to the medical care providers ordinance that you folks adopted last summer. The major changes, and forgive me, I'm flipping through to try to find that part.
Page 38.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So as I mentioned in my memo, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this matter last week and made a formal recommendation to you folks to hold the first reading and pending any comments from the public, if any were received, that would encourage you to modify any of the changes that are being brought forward, that we would have the second reading next month and have a final adoption at our March 15 meeting. So the four major areas that were modified were Section 3.25, which deals with odor issues under performance standards, also an amendment to Section 8.05 that provided a new section for how do we revoke a special land use? Because we really didn't have anything in our ordinance that provided that opportunity for revoking a special land use. So this would not only affect medical marijuana issues, but any special land use that was approved, so that we had a procedure in place to address any complaints or nuisances that would arise from a special land use within the village. Also, an amendment to Section 9.07, modifying the table of uses for primary caregivers to be regulated as a special land use in the industrial district. This was another major change because the ordinance from last summer said it was a permitted use. Now it is a special land use, so it has to go through additional processes to get approval in the industrial district. And also, the last amendment deals with regulating medical marijuana uses and defining that in our table of definitions, and also reconfirming the number of parking spaces that would be required for such an establishment, if it was established in the industrial district. And so also in your packet, page 41, is the proposed ordinance that summarizes all of the changes that are taking place from the amendments, and that goes through page 44 for the certification thereof. This has been a process that the Planning Commission has undertaken for several months now, I think since December, when we passed the moratorium and asked the Planning Commission to revisit this issue, and these are the proposed changes that have been brought forward for your consideration.
Any comments from council?
I just had a question. The idea of the sort of caregiver condo type of situation where there could be one building, but multiple different caregivers within that same building, is that addressed by this ordinance? It appeared to be the fact, or the case when I was reading through it, but I just wanted to confirm that that was the case.
I had an interpretation of what's being brought forward here is that that type of entrepreneurial building would still be allowed, but in light of what's going on in Lansing today with pending legislation, the individual who brought forward that concept, who was back in September, has said he has no desire or interest in moving forward with that type of development.
Legislation we're talking about is like, you're allowed, what, one patient?
Patient for each caregiver.
Right.
They've cut the number of plants and patients you can have, and the legislation's ongoing. That's why the Planning Commission took as long as it did, because we were trying to adjust along with the legislation on Lansing to make the decisions we made. So we tried to counter this legislation to fit almost any mold, which is the best for the village.
Just so it's clear to the public, any, we're legally permitted to regulate, which is what we, what the Planning Commission just did, and it's not being presented to us by mending ordinance 196.3.
Regulate, but we have to allow it somewhere.
Cannot exclude.
We cannot exclude, we have to regulate.
It cannot be exclusionary regulation, so that prohibiting it.
Industrial park, so there's a 500-foot zone away from the school property.
Yes. And taking into consideration, which Tim raised several times at these meetings, of trying to protect the residents who potentially were within range, so that they didn't have odor issues, any other issues. So Planning Commission also addressed that as well.
Yeah, I thought that was a good addition.
Several times.
State indicated what a proper disposal technique is?
Fine disposal.
Well, number seven here, and it says, "The disposal of plant material shall be done in a safe manner and secure manner, which does not permit those without proper permits to access."
I don't believe it's been any further defined. I mean, the legislature is supposed to put in regulations early on, going back several years, and they didn't really do it.
Well, I mean, because they do, yeah, they do make other, for other types of materials, oil, coolant.
I can't remember what they are off the top of my head, but I did attend a presentation given by the section that handles those requirements. And I just can't recall what they were, but there were specific requirements, so that they couldn't dispose of any of the materials that would be of interest to someone trying to, you know, steal it. They had to kind of keep those materials separate from just general waste, is what I recall, but that information is out there, if you wanted to go look it up. I just can't recall the details specifically.
I just wondered, I know that they're having an issue in Lapeer. Been on a couple of calls personally with people who are hanging around dispensaries looking for disposed-of waste.
In your experience on those calls, have they found any?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, they actually set up house and everything. They have a very homeless population growing around those neighborhoods, so.
This is where? In the city of Lapeer?
Yeah.
Could be the second San Francisco, or Los Angeles. Great. Okay, anybody else in council and public? Kim? Nope. Well, I think that concludes our public hearing as to amending zoning ordinance 193.6. So let's call the regular meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any changes, additions, deletions, or changes to the proposed agenda for this evening? Be none. Okay, roll call?
President Schneider?
Present.
President Proton Dyke? Councilmember Alex?
Present.
Councilmember Colka? Councilmember Feldman?
Present.
Councilmember Glasser? Councilmember Stifler?
Present.
Communications from our DDA Executive Director regarding the, which talked about snowplowing issue, just reading into record quickly, I discussed it with someone in comment time in our last meeting, but this is an actual correspondence announcement from our DDA Director. "DDA would like to inform the Central Business District business owners that this year's snow and ice removal will be handled by the Village of Elmont DPW Department. A meeting was held with the Village Manager, DDA Executive Director, DPW Supervisor, DDA Chairman, DDA Secretary, and Village of Elmont Clerk Treasurer, with the attached documents, which will provide information to you that you will need to review for snow and ice removal in the Central Business District." And then attached is the snow and ice removal policy, along with the Village of Elmont Department of Public Works' winter maintenance schedule, which is rather detailed, and for those in the downtown area and the business owners there, suggest that you review them. So on to regular agenda, the regular meeting minutes for our February 1 meeting. Anybody? Probably a couple grammaticals, but not worth. Just, it's fine, we, it's close enough to English, we get it. Anybody with any questions, comments, corrections for the proposed minutes for February 1? Be none. Our general fund, major streets, local streets, parks and recreation fund, downtown development authority fund, sewer fund, water fund, equipment fund, payroll register report, water report, DPW monthly report, wastewater treatment plant monthly report, police report. Okay, and code enforcement report from Construction Code Authority, financial position report. Entain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by President Proton Dyke, supported by Councilmember Stifler, to approve the consent agenda as just presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, unanimously approved. Now is the time for public comment for any item on our regular agenda. Is there any public comment this evening? There isn't. Regular agenda item number one, ordinance 193.6, first reading. So as we discussed in the public hearing, this, the development of this ordinance, and as is being presented, several months, several meetings, went before Planning Commission with our village planner, Caitlin Hablen, for amendments to the existing ordinance addressing issues of odor, special land uses, table of uses for marijuana primary caregivers in the industrial zoning district, which this is limited to, and amendment of Section 9.08 of Article 9 by modifying regulation of medical marijuana use as primary caregivers in the table of definitions. So all those were modified in some significant detail, after much consideration by Planning Commission, and as President presented to council this evening for first reading. Any commentary, discussion from council as to the first reading of ordinance 193.6?
I just have a process question. I don't remember what we did when we originally passed the original ordinance back in the summer, because we had a moratorium then. We have a moratorium now. It's going to go through first reading, so it won't be official until next month. Once it becomes, once given, assuming that it'll be voted official next month, how do we rescind the moratorium? Does passing this automatically do it, or do we need to make a motion to also rescind the moratorium? I don't remember how we've done that. I don't remember how we did that in the past.
Never have rescinded the moratorium.
It just expires.
It just expires based on the time period in that resolution.
The resolution, but it overlaps the, we'll need to double-check that, because I think if we pass this legislation next month and the moratorium is still on, it would make sense to continue the moratorium, so we might want to have a motion to rescind that also.
Records should be clear on that, yeah, because you can see us tripping over that one.
We don't need any cloudiness.
No?
Okay. Thank you.
There might be a clause in that moratorium resolution that clarified that if, if and when that.
Let's double-check that.
New ordinance was adopted, that that would be rescinded, but yes.
Let's double-check that wording then. If not, then let's also have a recension motion when we actually go to vote on this. Thank you.
Sure, very much agreed. Anybody else?
The original ordinance, just so that I'm clear, was 193.5. Okay.
Anybody else?
Oh, I think you should also, I think we should be also publicly stated that Planning Commission put hours of debate and planning into the changes here. There was a lot of robust and good discussion, and that body did a very good job of vetting it out, so I think they should be acknowledged for their work on this.
Yes, and along with our village planner, who are, as usual, did an excellent job of presenting and explaining and helping to lead us in the right direction so we could get this done. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, discussion, it looks like we have a consensus for first reading. As you know, consensus, we don't vote, just to see if, we're seeing if there's any significant objections to indicate there's not a consensus, which is just a majority of council. Okay. And this will be coming up at our second meeting in March? For second reading and final formal adoption. Okay, regular agenda item number two, the 2022 Park Board meeting dates. We have those set forth before us, and. Jim, you being, you're still Park Board at all? None at all? Okay. I just, I was curious as to the regular meeting public notice and sending forth dates in multiple months, and then another paragraph telling us again that meetings on the fourth Thursday of each month. Oh, I guess I finally am able to read English, understand why. I guess all the other meetings are here at the Municipal Hall, and those two are at the actual park, July and August, that so you can get mosquito bites. Any questions or discussion regarding Park Board meetings? We have to approve the meeting dates. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the Park Board's meeting dates.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Alex, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve the Park Board meeting dates as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, unanimously approved. Regular agenda item number three, Resolution 220201, support submission of natural resources grant application. Who wants to make a presentation as to this? Is that near Real House?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Andrew.
At the Parks Board meeting last month, I made a presentation to the Parks Board regarding the opportunity and the timing for applying for a grant to acquire some vacant property, which is located at 605 South Main Street, just south of the Clinton River, south of Creekside Hearth. It's a two and a quarter acre site that's owned by Mr. and Mrs. Sherwood, who've owned the property for quite a few years. And the purpose of the presentation was to ask if the Parks Board was interested in trying to acquire that property and basically provide the opportunity for access off of M53, which is a desired goal and objective of the Parks Board. Provide, because there's two buildings on the site today, possibly use one of those buildings, the larger one that's toward the center of the property, as a storage facility, because in their upcoming budget requests and needs, they were looking for some sort of storage shed that they would like to try to acquire. So this building would help satisfy the need for storage that the Parks Board has. And also, you know, provide the opportunity for extending trails, parking, and so those were the key elements in bringing forward this opportunity, because in some conversation I've had with the Sherwoods, they have indicated, because of an interest from another developer that was interested in that site, that they were at that stage in life where they were considering the possibility of selling, whereas the history that I've been told is that whenever overtures had been made to them in the past, that they were not inclined to sell at that juncture. So at this point, we have at least a willing seller, and so the Parks Board said, yes, they were very much interested in getting approval from the Township Board and the Village Council to move the process forward. And so there's a very tight timeline now that exists for applying for a grant. The grant deadline is April 1st. The match requirements from the village and the township would be shared. It's a 25% match, so the DNR grant for land acquisition covers 75% of the cost of the grant. The initial grant that I would propose that we request is $100,000. Included in some information I emailed to you yesterday, hopefully you were able to procure your hard copy in your mailbox before the meeting, that has the information from our assessing department that shows the tax record as far as the SEV. According to our assessor, they believe that the true cash value of that property is $87,500. I reviewed that material with one of our local realtors to get their pulse of whether or not that was an accurate assessment in today's market. They believed it was, and so in some further discussion with our assessing department, they would concur that somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000 is a true value for that property today. And pending whether or not we go through the process and have public hearings next month, because one of the other requirements is that you have to garner some input from the public regarding this activity, that with the deadline of April 1st, we don't find out until sometime in the early fall if we're even in the running for consideration for the grant. And then there's a process where the Natural Trust Board has to actually submit their recommendations to the legislature, which then has to get approved by the governor, which doesn't happen until January of next year, because then it has to be built into an appropriation bill for all of the communities that are requesting grant monies from the DNR for land acquisition and also development grants. So it's a long process, and one of the other criteria, if and when we get to that point, if we were awarded the grant, is that we have to have an appraisal done on the property as well. So that helps confirm what the value of it is, and the DNR has, let's say, veto power to a certain extent, where they would say, you know, if the seller wants, you know, let's just say an outlandish price, $200,000, twice as much as what we would have for the grant, then it's up to the community to determine whether or not they want to pay the differential from that standpoint, because the DNR will only award up to the grant amount that's been requested, with a 25% match plus any differential. So that's basically the framework of what's involved in applying for a land acquisition grant with the DNR. It's a 75% award, 25% the responsibility of the local community. Since we share that responsibility with our friends at the Township, last night at their board meeting, they did approve a similar resolution that indicates their support, and assuming that the grant was for $100,000 and that was what the sale price was, each entity would be responsible for $12,500.
Regulations with regard to the appraisal, presuming it's, I mean, we would use a certified appraiser. We can make our choice?
Absolutely, yeah.
Certified appraiser. What's an irony to me with regard to this, my office has to deal with real estate quite a bit, quite a bit, and stating this is the fair market value is ambiguous at best. This real estate market is nuts. And to advertise on TV, we'll tell you what the actual fair market value is of your property. Yeah, right. It's a wild market.
Yes. If by chance we are successful in getting an award for this property and we come to terms with the Sherwoods, it lays the foundation and the framework for us to be able to move forward with future grant requests that would help us develop the property as well. So this is basically phase one of a several-step process to help enhance the acreage there, put in some level of parking that might just be, you know, gravel at an initial stage like we have over in front of the pavilion in the park area. But again, it's one of those things that helps expand the park and provides more flexibility and amenities for improvement down the road.
Do the Sherwoods know how long this process could take?
They know it's going to take several months.
So let them know.
Did have some conversation. Did have some conversation by chance with one of the relatives that was considering the purchase of the property. And that individual decided that they wanted to stay where they were and not move in that direction. They were thinking about buying it and putting up a building for their business purposes and so on. So the only feedback I've received thus far is that they're making inquiries with local agents to try to get what they believe is a, you know, fair market value price before it would be listed. But, you know, we're reaching out to them. They know the village is interested in pursuing this property.
Pursuing this, we're interested, we have interest, but this is the timeline of the process. So they have a full recognition of it.
Sure.
Some grants, if you apply for it and then get accepted, but don't accept it, is there any penalty within this grant for something of that scenario?
We have the opportunity to decline the award, especially like, let's say, if we were negotiating, let's say, you know, they start at 200,000 and we're at 100, you know, if we can't come to terms, we would contact the DNR and tell them that.
Just want to make sure there was no like.
Yeah, there's no repercussions.
No decline fee or something like that. Thank you.
Since this is a DNR grant, have they written into the grant process or the grant itself a specific use of the property? So maintain the waterway or, you know, no lowlands can be used for, you know, that we might walk into and not realize, we can't develop it the way we'd like to develop it in the future because of a restriction within the grant, because it is the DNR, they owe, you know, they're paying 75% of this.
The only requirement that I know of from the DNR is that they, that you're committing that that property will be used in perpetuity for park purposes, recreation, et cetera. And that, and that if you repurpose the property for whatever reason down the road, that if you apply for a future grant, you actually lose points on your grant because you've converted a property that was acquired with DNR funds.
Also the Pete's point outside of the grant process, and I think I mentioned this in the last time we discussed this, there has been discussion that there's low water table in that area. And I know with the wastewater treatment plant, when we did the equalization tanks, there was wetlands areas defined that could not be moved on. So, or had to, if you did use wetlands, you had to mitigate wetlands somewhere else to make up the differential. So before we go to a final purchase, I think those types of property mitigations outside, even outside of a DNR should be looked at and investigated.
Issue. This is a particularly good time for the Sherwoods to sell, considering this market, because it's still, at this moment, is a hot market. And it's owned by their living trust. And one of the aspects of having your real estate owned by a trust is there's no capital gains tax. So potentially saves them a lot of money. I presume that they didn't have to pay a whole lot for it and that increase in value would be a capital gain, especially since it's not a residence. So there's no exemptions from it, but if it's trust property, no capital gains tax at all. Okay, so I, and I, aside from the commentary here, and Tim's absolutely right about checking out the wetlands issue. I don't really see any downside to this. So do we have a motion?
I just have one question before we make a motion. In the resolution itself, it describes it as 2.25 acres of vacant property. Is that accurate considering the structures that are there? Or do they not count as development because of their condition or age?
Normally, in my experience, if there is not a residence on the property, it's called vacant. And so I frequently see legal description called vacant property, and even though they have a barn on it and a shed. But that's my experience.
Class of structure.
Considered accessory structures. My understanding of that historically in the past, one of those buildings, if not both, were used in some sort of machining operation, but that goes back many, many years ago. And, you know, the buildings have not been utilized for many years now.
I just want to make sure it's not an issue that we're misrepresenting the property.
The property I just bought with that barn on it on Elm Road, they considered that vacant.
And your point, David, does remind me, I think the last time we discussed this too, we also talked about if we get to the point where we are considering acquiring the property, that we do some type of due diligence as far as environmental conditions of the building and property itself, considering its history. That's all I had.
Suggesting that we have to, like a phase one?
Phase one. Back when I used to write them, they cost a couple thousand dollars, but could be a good investment.
Something to know.
Sure.
Yeah, especially if there was manufacturing, whatever they were before.
Stranger things on less developed properties.
Yeah, I'm sure. And yeah, and we certainly have our Dollar General sets discovered all kinds of wonderful things.
Correct.
With regard to that property, yeah. Okay, any further discussion about the proposed resolution for the application for a grant? Is there a motion?
You make the motion to approve resolution 22-02-01 to apply for the grant as presented.
Support.
Motion made by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Steffler, to approve resolution 22-02-01, support submission of natural resources grant application. Any further discussion?
Is that flood zone going to be any kind of issue on any of that?
If we decide to develop it in any way.
Stands to a certain part of the property. I'm thinking about the issue with Creekside Hearth. He had to deal with that as well, too. But all he had to do was raise the elevation of his building by a foot and a half. And he was out of the 100 or 500 year flood plain concern, so.
Yeah, we just want to be careful with what we do and where on that property.
Discussion. Roll call?
Eldman? Glasser? Steffler?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Schneider?
Resolution 22-02-01 is unanimously approved. That concludes our regular agenda for this evening. Now it's public comment time for any non-agenda items. I believe there is any public comment as to non-agenda items. We do have in our open discussion agenda, parking in West St. Clair. Sandy DePaul had, once in December and a couple of weeks ago, raised that issue of the hazard proposed by the intersection of West St. Clair and, the north side of West St. Clair and Church Street. And because the village attempting to accommodate the business owners as best possibly could because of the fact that there's parking issues with particular regard to the lot at the southwest corner, behind the businesses at that corner, additional parking spaces were created along West St. Clair, West St. Clair, south side and north side. And the north side parking in particular extended out to where it was quite close to its intersection with Church Street.
They removed a parking spot, the first parking spot towards each side there. I know they did it in front of the library.
Well, the, well, within, manager can fill us in. I think we eliminated one or two spots on the north side as it approached Church Street. There's some kind of a barrier sign there. And Sandy sent us a photograph. And then Mindy also indicated like, yeah, I'd use that intersection.
It is tough to see traffic when you're trying to pull out of there.
Yeah, and not everybody goes 25 miles an hour on top of it. Yeah, it obviously posed a hazard. I mean, responding to Sandy's, you know, parking is a continuing headache for the village because of its structure, but safety comes first. So I think our manager and our police chief went out to the site and took a look at how many spots to do eliminate.
I'm pleased to report that once we got the tribunal out there to refresh our memories, because it was like, geez, we visited this thing a couple of months ago. What is it that we did? And once we were out there together, Brian helped refresh our memories because the one parking spot that I think you alluded to that had been removed on the north side of the road, the paint had disappeared. And so there was enough of the white markings there where people took advantage of that and started parking. And so obviously it was causing a visibility problem for those that were making a left-hand turn onto West St. Clair. And we also eliminated that one spot on the south side of the road, too, near the library as well. And so once we reconfirmed that, yes, we did address the concern that Sandy raised back in December.
I thought we had, because I was approached about that by several people back in the summer and brought it up. And you had eliminated, I know, the space at least on the south side. And I bike or walk or run through there that time of day many times during the week. Well, not as much the last couple of weeks because I've been more in the office. But there was a very much improved situation. I thought since October, November, when those spaces were eliminated compared to the summer, when it was very hard to see, so.
So in the interim, until we get some warmer weather and we can put a post in the ground that would have a permanent sign that says, no parking here to the corner, we've put up a temporary barrier that has that sign on it that says, no parking here to the corner. And it looks like people are respecting that barrier. We haven't seen any, anybody parked closer to the curb with that barrier up. So appreciate Sandy helping regenerate the concern and the comments from council members. Your feedback was appropriate. And, you know, if we have those kinds of temporary fixes in the future, we'll have to use better paint.
It's a fine balance because, I mean, it's got to be happy to report. When I go through there that time, the main parking lot is being used. So that's a good sign that our businesses are doing well. But it's just trying to do that fine balance of safety and accommodation. And I appreciate you guys getting to know so quick.
It is a balancing act, no question. And prior to us addressing that issue, there were no parking spaces. And the business owners were quite disturbed, perturbed by that. And now, when you, if you drive by it, you see a few empty spots. So from that standpoint, it's working. And after informing Sandy of the fact that our manager and police chief had been out there and eliminated parking for that one spot, she did not indicate there was any further problem or safety concerns that she was raising. So it appears to have been well addressed. Yeah. So I think it takes care of open discussion issue. And so now we just go to comment time. Manager Trent, did you have anything to bring to council?
Just a quick update that last week I was tied up for two solid days finishing up my zoning administrator certificate class. I have to take the exam now and I have a few weeks to be able to complete that task. But I thought the class was very worthwhile, will help me in my administrative responsibilities as a zoning administrator. Also, in the last several days, we've had ongoing dialogue with the parties that are interested in acquiring some vacant parcels in the industrial park. And we're getting to that crunch time where people are doing due diligence and questions are being raised. And so we're interfacing with the owner of the properties, our engineers. Even had an issue come up with a drain concern that we might have to go to Joe Suma to talk about. So those are the kind of little wrinkles that are cropping up. The parties that have expressed interest are still very much highly determined that they want to locate in our industrial park. And so I think two weeks ago I shared with you that there was the opportunity for four vacant lots. But right now it's somewhere between three and five. So we might actually get an extra bonus out of the discussion that's going on. But definitely three, possibly four, and you never know, there might be a fifth one that comes into play as well. So just wanted to give you that brief, brief update.
Yes, actually, we are in the process of migrating our email over. So a representative from IT Right will be reaching out to all of you tomorrow to get your new email set up through Outlook. So if there's an unknown name or number, I know we usually reject those, but you might want to answer that one.
Speak by phone call?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe.
And so Kim, does this mean we'll be able to have our village email access through our phones?
Yes. Okay. That's, I think that's a real good move as opposed to forwarding to personal emails because of FOIA and other issues. Yeah, it's through the Outlook app.
That's huge improvement. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kim?
That's it. Thank you.
Quick question is I had a couple residents reached out. And obviously they seen we're doing some stuff with the tree over in back of the park, back of the Bluebird. And obviously we've been talking about doing some things to the pocket park and so forth. And their question was, is in the future, can we look at things like adding picnic tables or doing some things to kind of clean that park up, just to make it more, you know, residential friendly? Because they said, you know, we spend a lot of money and the area is down, obviously by the river and stuff like that. And they just said, you know, can we do anything to kind of beautify the area since, you know, it's not really part of the park's responsibility? You know, so they just wanted to know if we could do some things to kind of make it more active and lively and kind of help both the residents and the businesses out a little bit. So I said I would kind of bring it up to the group and see if we can maybe have a discussion on it.
Were we talking about Burley Park? It's kind of a touchy subject both ways because it was set aside as a veterans memorial park. When Sarah was here, there was talk about doing some upgrades and the veterans were not, the veterans were not very happy about it. So and we have a letter stating that it is a memorial park given to the village, but I don't know if that extends on what we can actually do to it or how much you actually want to.
Yeah, because they mentioned like even the shrubs around like the plaque and everything is overgrown and it's just.
Have maintenance.
Right.
Maintenance should be an issue, but.
Any tables might be a problem. I mean, veterans say that Memorial Day, they collect there.
Yeah, but that's what they're saying. Like if they go to eat there or they want to hang out at the park, at least they could do something with it versus just sitting. It's not, it's not a bad idea, if it could be done.
My input from the veterans, yeah, to, you know, out of respect for the intended purpose of the park.
Dedicated to that.
Yeah, is there, who would be the point person on that?
So I wasn't sure where to start it.
Yeah.
Because that was before my time, so I don't know who the.
Since they give their hall here, do they meet here anymore? Something to check out, seeing we don't have a ready answer to that. Who's our research clerk?
Yeah, I mean, that, I think it's a worthwhile discussion to see if they would like that too, you know, our veterans groups, so. I just wanted to extend my sympathies to the Calca family for their loss. That's all.
Did we move it forward on anything with the leaf collection contracts for dumping? And are we going to be doing a new machine, or any information on the new machines?
Several quotes on new machines, and we're going to be having some discussion with potential site disposal locations over the next couple of weeks, and come prepared to make a recommendation to council next month.
I just, I know the machines are probably a four or five-month build-out, even though the snow is still here, start thinking about vacuum leaves again already. I just, I know that old one is almost a non-repair, it'll cost more than the machine's worth to fix, from what Brian was saying a month ago.
Start thinking ahead, that's for sure. Anything else, Jim? Yeah, I also wish to extend my condolences to the Calca family, the showing, the showing tomorrow and funeral ceremony on Thursday at the new funeral home identified as Emily City. So, and if you are planning to participate, I think showing's from 3:00 to 8:00 tomorrow. And then I think starting late morning on Thursday. We're adjourned. We are adjourned.